Yeah, yeah. But if we can reconvene here at 12:32, we are going to move on to, yeah, right, exactly, Steve, our timekeeper, sorry about that. Item B, the update on deep wells, 10,000 feet deep injection pumping of sewage treatment, effluent, and sludge, Councilman Fred Forbes.
Real quickly, and that's gonna be quick, I'm gathering more information, also got a couple of the scientific people, geologists and hydrologists from Florida Gulf Coast University that are gonna help get me answers, and then, once I get more information, I'll come back with a in-depth thing. So I defer my time to Councilman O'Flynn, so he can do this financial. I know, I'm trying to get it bumped up.
Oh, okay. Oh, in the interest of, we have a couple of members that may need to leave before we get to the budget.
May need.
Or the, yeah.
Yeah, I have to.
This financial discussion.
Yeah.
Why don't we, okay. Peter's trying to get down some lunch. Why don't we do that in just a minute? How's that? Is that good?
Yeah, two minutes.
Okay, in two minutes, okay. Do you want to move on to?
Years.
Yeah. Item C here, the discussion and provide staff input and direction, if any, relating to Bloomberg Philanthropies 2017 Mayor's Challenge and the Idea Accelerator. In the interest of time, but obviously to give everybody a flavor here, and folks that are in the room and folks that'll be listening to this or watching at home, at the mayor's conference in Miami recently, Mayor Michael Bloomberg, former mayor in New York City, was there and made an outstanding presentation and spent the time to really, and had a people, his team there, and encouraged us to sign up for this bottom-line accelerator, you know, philanthropies, mayor's challenge, so to speak. For those, and I'm not gonna, I guess, expound upon too much Mayor Michael Bloomberg, but certainly successful, from a successful family, has kinda did, done a lot of things outside of the box, so if we can just kind of think about that for a second, what I would like to do, because we were one of the first 300 cities, they, Michael Bloom, his team will come and do a presentation with us, a workshop, what have you, on this accelerator, to help either, obviously, discuss the ideas that we have, some things maybe we're not thinking about that we can do for Benita Springs, and then, look to fund the ideas. So I would just like to open up that discussion. I would like to recommend that we move forward with this. I'd like to have members of his team come here and work with us and have a discussion with us, a workshop, if you will. They will do that.
Wow.
I hate to say, because I was there and physically filled out a little form, put it in, and we were one of the first 300 cities in America. I think we were number 111 or 112, it's just how it worked out, but bottom line, we're one of the first 300. And I did share the emails that I've received, and actually, if we want to do this, it's timely because we need to sign up today for the workshop, or at least put a placeholder in. We don't need a date, per se, but we need to say yea or nay on this, and that's what this is. So, open it up for discussion.
The workshop is scheduled for what, the end of July or August, something like that?
Well, we will.
We don't know yet.
Yeah, no, we don't know yet. We don't know yet. No, I think it'll be, I think it'll be prior to October. At some point, but we'll just figure out the time. Yes, Amy?
Well, I did read the material that you sent us, and it required, and it suggested that we work on an urgent problem, so I think what the council and the city needs to do is figure out what the urgent problem is, and that we might do outreach to some of the nonprofit agencies that are around us. And the only one I, that I thought of was having something to do with senior citizens, and that is where there was a communication, interaction between, in this other community I knew about with the police, where senior citizens could register, and if they didn't call into this number by a certain time, then they would call them, because there's a lot of seniors who are living alone and don't have anyone to check on them, and I know that that's been operating in other cities. But I don't know if that's a need for our community, because I'm not that familiar with it, but I think it's something that has to have, certainly has some urgency and some regional interest, so that we could use it as, I think the idea is to have a model and then it expand into other cities. So, we need to work on the urgent issue.
Right, no, absolutely. Pete, or.
I think this is fabulous. My suggestion is we're in sprawl rehabilitation, and that's an urgent need.
Right.
You know, we've got a road system that was designed 30 years ago with everything on one arterial or two arterials, and we've got hardening in the arteries, where we need urgent help, for urgent care.
Right.
Good.
I concur. Council, are we okay? Do we want to vote on this to move forward? Is that okay?
Definitely.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we move forward on not only this initiative, but also with getting a member of Mayor Bloomberg's team here for the accelerator scheduled. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, has been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slatter.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba.
Aye.
And Arlene, if you can, because I'll be around, as you know, later on, will this work, maybe to get that scheduled or get that in motion, whatever we need to do? Thank you so much. Okay, are we gonna move on to Councilman O'Gibson's financials? Yeah, O'Gibson, O'Forbes.
Why don't we do that, because Fred's gonna go, right?
No, no, you go.
No, he's got till like, 10 to 1.
No, I thought you said 10 to 2.
He did, but he just mentioned 10 to 1.
He was on central time, okay.
On central time? All right, so that's, that's the green sheet on finances in the back, and I just, a few points here, and I have this twice in here, the city is sound financially, the city is sound financially, this is not some, so I want to put this in a proper context. But I did take away from our conversation at the last meeting, kind of a challenge to myself in terms of, because I think the point was made by another council member, well, we have debt and we'll pay it out of general fund. I thought that was fair to say, and I thought, well, how are we in context with other municipalities? So that's what the sheet is on the back, in terms of our debt. This is not scientific, but I didn't pick and choose. I went around and I said, you know, just around the coast, around us, what are similarly-sized cities? I had Venice, Punta Gorda, Del Ray's a little bigger, Jupiter about the same size, Coral Gables much bigger. And what I did was look at their annual budgets for last year, and I looked at their debt service as a percent of two items. One is property taxes, the other is general fund revenues. And as we know, the only other significant sources of money are impact fees and local option gas taxes, fund as in the lockbox. And we're way up there. We are at debt service as a percent of property taxes is 44 percent. Debt service as a percent of the entire general fund revenue is 20 or 20 percent, 21 or 21 percent, depending if you count in the extra utility fees from last year. And I did include in that number, in that, in that general fund revenue number, the numbers we're getting from Lee County on the downtown TIF, even though that's accounted for in what's called a debt service fund. So I took whatever ad valorem taxes, even the stuff that's in the debt service fund, and I took the contractual TIF money from Lee County. So you can see, I mean, Venice is at 4.3 on property taxes, Punta Gorda at 16, Del Ray at 2.1 percent, Jupiter, Coral Gables, and then when you take it as a percent of, I'm on the last white page here, when you take it as a percent of general fund revenues, we're at, call it 20 percent ballpark, some of them are at 1.2 percent, 6.9, 1.4, 6.7, 5.9. My only point is to have a line of sight on reality. This is not good, bad, or different, it's a line of sight on reality, that's a significant strain on our budget. And I'm going fast because Fred's 10 to 1. So, the other thing is the old 41 project, and it's always been a concern to me that people are mixing and matching the beauty of the streetscape and not really thinking so hard about the financial aspects of it. Obviously, financial aspects, in a way, was part of some elections we had recently, but to where we are now, you know, it's said that, I think a lot of people around town think it's an $18.6 million project and Lee County's paying half of it. And indeed, that's what, press releases went out saying that. That's true, like, you know, in the long run, we're all dead, you know, that's true over 20 years or so. But the reality is that, as predicted in that contractual TIF, and we're slightly ahead of the pace in that contractual TIF, but as predicted, the lion's share, the way a TIF works, the lion's share of Lee County money comes in, in the next decade. So that's one observation on that. And I think I presented something before that showed that if you add in the stated cost of the project, the 18.6, you add in the debt service during the construction period, and you add in things that are logical corollaries of that downtown development, like the purchase of Liberty Lighthouse Church, and the 11 property was only $100,000. You add all those in, you are at $25 to $30 million of spending during the construction period. That's our use of funds, our source of funds is twofold, the $13 million debt, and about, it's not quite, I don't think, $2 million from Lee County in that period. So that also puts a strain on, on the budget. So that's the second point. Third point is road impact fee credits. So we already talked about road impact fees at the last budget workshop. This is with respect to credits as well. So Fred, I'm not sure exactly, I know John's here, but I think John told me that, so all that work out east, we're not getting road impact, all meaning the buildings of homes, is that a fair statement? We're not getting credits, we're not getting impact fees now?
Essentially, those fees have already been paid.
Right, right.
So, so what happened was, and once again, I'm not trying to be pejorative, I'm just trying to get a line of sight on what we've got here. So what happened was, previous council said to those developers, you can build out there, in what form, actually, that used to be DRGR as well, you can build out there in that area, and you can build the front road to your development, and we'll give you impact fee credits for you to build that road. And that road is the extension of Benita Beach Road out east. So some people might say, we have all this building going on, what do you mean, impact fee, fees are going down? Well, that was already cashed in years ago. And then we also have impact fee credits, like the thing that was given two years ago for a private road that was built 20 years ago that the city agreed to take on responsibility for, and also agree, actually agreed to pay a total of 1.3 or 4 of impact fee credits, but the top portion didn't get annexed, so it ended up being about $1 million. So I've just, I, from my personal perspective, I just think that's important to me as context for where we are with respect to our financial situation. That's it, this factual.
Yeah, Fred, we'll start down with you.
Only because I'm 10 minutes before, to go, before launch, so to speak. I agree with everything that Deputy Mayor O'Flynn has said, with a couple caveats. I did get Ann to put together some additional data on cities and expanded the net a bit, and some interesting things. Punta Gorda, the reason theirs is so good, in 2007, they got killed by the hurricane, and they got, all the FEMA came in and built all that wonderful downtown streetscape and paved, paver streets and all that. Having said all that, I agree with his assessment, let me say, here's what I think we should do, and this is just my, my own viewpoint. Number one, we have, in my mind, in order to save a little money of trying to package eventually a study on impact fees with somebody else, and maybe save 40, 50 grand, we've put ourselves in a, we've lost a year. We've lost more money, we will lose more money in not having done that than we will ever save on that little study piggyback. So I would urge us to get that going now, consider having a separate line item for the multimodal use pass and all that, but I think that's important. The other thing I think we should do this year is get a clear idea of what our real strategies are in projects and schedules, and then start to budget workshops for the next fiscal year, not the one that's upcoming, the one after that. Instead of starting it when we do, start it about three months early with a tentative guestimated budget, a tentative best we can do in revenues, and look at what we are supposed to be doing versus what those things say we can do, and then we have some hard decisions to make. One is, we could raise the ad valorem, we can raise those taxes on communications, FPL, we can also make cuts, we may not, we may get to a point where we have a hard decision. We may say, well, even though we wanted to do this particular stuff now, we're gonna have to kick the can down the road. But I think, I think this year, we ought to, we've got a number one, top-of-the-line consultants, this Alta and this CPZ, I think they can help, be very helpful in us figure out, we'll do the figuring, but they'll give us the input to really come up with a good strategic capital plan and needs plan. So that, that's what I think. So I think this is a good discussion, and I think the additional information that Ann put together, including what the millage rates are in each of these cities and all that, that's all good information to show you either how good or bad we're doing. We're not, we're not doing terrible, but we're not where we ought to be, and as Councilman O'Flynn said, that $3 million we were supposed to have between this year and next year, that's, that makes a big impact on the city. So that's my, my comment.
Thank you. We'll just go along the line here. Mike?
No, I agree. I mean, the big thing is the debt service, it's stuff that's been done, you know, we have the debt, we have to pay for it. It's, you know, it's already, that ship's already sailed, so, yeah, you know, we may have to just wait longer to get things done that we want to do, so it's just such is life.
Thanks. Steve?
Yeah, Peter? Got a question for you. On this list over here.
Right.
My, I think Benita Springs is the youngest city, correct? Now, by any chance, have these other cities, Jupiter, Coral Gables and all that, have they gone through what we've gone through years ago?
I don't know. I mean, this is not, you know, my view wasn't like to justify how they're different than us or like that. Punta Gorda, all right, they had something, I mean, I think if you looked at reasonable leverage in cities, you're not gonna see the numbers we have as a percent of these numbers. That's all. And, you know, it's, that's really it. I don't, you know, and, because, you know, this started with a conversation about how it was gobbling up the general fund at the last meeting, and I was just trying to get more, because that's a fact, and I just trying to get more information with respect to it. But one thing I will say on looking at these other towns, and, I don't know, do you want, you want to go through everybody else, or you want me, Greg? No, I just gotta.
Why don't we go to Greg and then Amy?
Then I'll tell, then I'll respond more to Steve.
We'll let him finish the, you started, finish and then.
All right, fine, so. So.
He changed his own direction. I do that oftentimes, Steve.
Well, no, I don't want to hog it, so.
All right, Fred, we'll see ya. Take care.
Do your homework, Fred.
Yeah, do your homework.
And then.
There were six. There'll be a quiz, Fred.
Here's my general take, and I might have said this at the last meeting. I think what happened in Benita Springs was, understandably, and all of us would have been doing it the same way, they were so flush with massive amounts of impact fees that, the numbers I quoted last time, nine, 10 million dollars, that there wasn't a lot of focus put on, you know, in that context, things are different, all right? Now we're in a position where that's shrinking. When you, sorry?
Please, please.
When you look at other towns, we're almost unique, for example, in not having any enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, in other words, there's hardly, other than Astaro, actually, which probably because they are new. I don't know if you could find a town in Florida, and I can go check, maybe there's one, two, that doesn't have a stormwater utility, all right? So stormwater utility is gobbling up our budget, $900,000 this year. We all know a big part of the Shangri-La Road was actually a stormwater utility project, all right? We've got this crammed-down, massive commitment, dollar-wise and project-wise, put on by the DEP, and other municipalities have dealt with that in stormwater funds. And some of them have borrow in those enterprise funds, but they're segregated with segregated streams of money. So, that's enough for now, I want to hear everybody else.
Okay.
Well, I was kind of going kind of twofold. I appreciate the work you done, but I did a little bit, like Punta Gorda became a city in like 1897.
Right.
So that's kind of, I kind of thought the same way Steve did, and they went through these growing pains later on. They've had a lot of time to build up reserve funds to pay, as you and I have spoke about many times, pay as you go. And I think they, they went through the growing pains prior to us, and I think that's what we're going through right now, is growing pains, like you alluded to, the stormwater stuff. You know, City of Naples, probably, when they were incorporated way back when, probably didn't have that. Now, through time, they've, holy moly, this is costing a lot of money, we need to have this fund.
Right, they did it in 93.
So that's what I mean, so I see where you come to. The other thing, I did a little bit of research too, and let me find my little.
Can you show the audience a little black book? I like that, old school.
The old school, but like the town of Wellington, became a town in 1995.
Right.
Similar size, but the thing that I think we have going for, and Mike's kind of made the comment about it, is that their millage rate is 2.43.
Absolutely.
So I think what Fred and Ann were talking about, if we can get what these, what the other municipalities, especially the ones you talked about and yours, let's see what their actual millage rate is and compare that to.
I actually have that, but, yeah, but that's a fair.
I think that's a fair point, that, you know, let's put it out there, and I know the mayor, you're gonna back me up, you're gonna at least stop him from coming over at me. Had we raised the millage to pay for this debt services in the past, we wouldn't have debt services. So it's, it's, you know, pay me now or pay me later, is the concept. And I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it 100.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
So it's just.
I'm not saying we should raise the millage, but I appreciate the comment.
No, I'm not saying we, I'm not saying we should either, but if we want to do something quicker, as in the quadrant study or the quadrant build-out, that may be a reality, or the debt services is gonna go up. I mean, just, it's a, it's a simple fact, and the way I kind of look at it when I look at the budgets, it's like a household budget. Am I gonna go to Disney World and put a new roof on? Or am I gonna have to go out and get a second job to pay for those things? And that's our second job, or maybe the gas tax, communications tax, and so on and so forth. Or, you know, if I own a business like Mike, you know, I may have to raise, raise the price on shrimp or bike tires that day if I want to start a new business or build on.
Right.
So those are realities of the situation. Where we go from here is either one of two things, like we said, tightening our belts or holding off a few projects or raising prices. And I don't think any, we just need to figure that out.
Right.
But I think it needs to be said.
Right, great. Thank you, Greg. Amy?
I just want to thank you for presenting this table. I don't think it matters whether we're, you know, what year we're in or where we are in our development, because this is basically a picture of where we are now. And we have already, as a council, we're going down some visions and some concepts that we've already subscribed to. So what this tells us is that it's probably unrealistic to think that we would go down the route of debt for any of these projects that we're going forward, where it doesn't say we can't do that, but it probably is not a prudent thing to do. So this was very instructive to me, because I never calculated these things, and I think it's just basically a reality of where we are. But I do think that this is important for our budget discussions going forward, because one of the things that we can do, and probably ought to do, but we could talk about it some more, is that we ought to put stuff into a rainy day fund to take care of these projects that we have in there. So we can't, we have to be building up our, our general fund revenues over time, and maybe we have a five-year plan where it's gonna be at a certain level. So that, that has to be part of it, and we're looking at the expenditure side here, and that's the first thing that you have to look at before you talk, you talk about raising revenues. You can't just say, don't raise the revenues, don't raise the taxes, you have to look on the expenditure side, and that's why I think this is a very useful construct. So we have a lot to talk about.
The only other idea I've been toying around with is whether or not, I think it would make some sense to have, I don't know if the whole, the whole council wanted to do it, fine, but if there was a smaller group and we'd look to Audrey for advice on how this would be done under the charter and the sunshine law, to have a subgroup, a subcommittee of council, like a finance committee, just look at things that Greg's talking about, and look at what other cities have done, just to explore, because I found just looking at other budgets, there are all kinds of cities doing all kinds of things that, I'm not saying we should do or not do, but I know, in my mind, it should, it would, it's prudent to look at. So I don't know if that's, we talked about it briefly, I don't know if you talked to Audrey, it can be done in the right way, you have to go through administrative code change or some such thing.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, but it's doable.
It's doable, if you, if council gives me direction. The only thing I would suggest, other governments do it, we used to call them service delivery or management and planning. All are invited, but not all need to attend, you don't vote on it, but you're able to explore with additional detail than you would normally spend in a normal meeting. So as Mayor Simmons pointed out, your eyes do not glaze over, and we could set it up, where it would go is in the administrative code, because there is language in the charter, there is language in the administrative code, we're kind of creating a hybrid, but it's perfectly doable that way.
But the notion is, if all seven council members want to be on it, that's fine. If three or four do, or two, that's fine. If seven want to come on any day, that's fine, obviously, but it, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out some way to get some traction, as opposed to just one person doing it or another person doing it, collective traction in looking at stuff. And, you know, it's not gonna be done in August and September, it's not for this budget, it's, you know, in the next, in the next so many months. So I don't know what people think.
No, I like it.
Well, that makes sense to me, because I always, I like to do things collegially, and even though we have kind of a formal process here, and that's why it takes so long to get through these meetings, because I think if some of this preliminary work were done, and I'm, it's fine if one person wants to do all the work, but I always think that it's, it's better that we have a few more inputs, because obviously, we all think totally in very different ways, but that's, that's our strength, not our weakness, but we have to get that diversity in thinking together in a, in a, in an efficient way.
Right.
So if you want, I'll take a shot with Arlene and Audrey about coming up with a format, and then bring it back to council, and whoever, every, all seven want on is fine.
Right.
But if it's a smaller amount, that's fine, too.
And Audrey, would it be possible, when they have the meetings, like if I couldn't make it, could it be recorded where I could watch it later? Is that allowed in sunshine?
Of course. Yes, and it is a sunshine meeting, so anything that was records, anything that was, as far as records could, you know, would be able to be obtained, public would be allowed to attend, and we've had that here. The problem is, is there's kind of, again, use the word nuance, in the charter, who's allowed to call a meeting and a special meeting, you don't want to call it that, you want to call it something else, so it's a hybrid, so it's outside the charter, but it also, it's, it's very common.
Okay.
So it's not a problem, we just kind of need to have a date and time certain.
Greg, does it make sense to you?
Yeah, it does, I was just looking up another city, but yes, it does make sense. I think it's a good idea.
Back into the black book, buddy.
Yeah, back into.
It's more reliable.
No, but I think it is a great idea to do it that way.
Okay.
That way, we, at least we could give those who didn't show up either a good watch it or a clear, like, hey, this is what we found, and this is what we see.
And anybody can show up to any meeting.
Yeah.
Including the public.
Yeah.
Great, great, great.
Thanks for.
Yeah, no, great work, Pete.
Okay.
Okay, do we need a vote on that? I'm sorry.
I received, as far as I know, I received direction to handle.
Okay.
Setting up a workshop-type format inside our administrative code, and I'll work with Council, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn and Arlene Hunter on preparing that. If you have anything else on this green sheet, I'm not aware.
No. Why don't we just call it planning and finance or some such thing?
That's a good name.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Now we are going to move on, let's see, we are at pet-friendly communities. Oh, yeah, you know, this was, look, we all, we all love our pets, I don't want to oversimplify this. This was another initiative that. This was another initiative that was at the mayor's conference. And with, I'll, I'll be frank here, with some urging of my wife. I, I just thought we should have a discussion on it. You know, and if it's just as simple as to Arlene and I or whomever can look into it further, because I, you know, I, it, it just kind of, to make these pet-friendly communities, there's a lot of goodwill that goes with it. There's also some recognition that goes with it. And maybe just something as simple as, are we okay to look into this further? And then we'll make a discussion, a, our decision at that time. Would that be all right?
Well, I noticed, I'm sorry.
Mayor, having a dog, as you know, I mean, you go to, I think our city is pretty good when it comes to community friendly for pets. You know, you look, you walk into Rural King, you take your dog with you. You can go to, by the promenade, they've got that outside bar there. You can sit there and eat and drink and have your pet with you, so.
Big Hickory?
Huh?
Big Hickory, I've gone there before.
Yep. And then you go down to the, something, Patio Cafe down in North Naples. You know, dog friendly, we got our dog park. So I don't think there's anything that we shouldn't address, but I mean, I don't think it's a Russian and thinking about all the things we're putting on staff right now.
And then that was my point, rather than to dive into this and say, we have to forge forward right now. But if I can, I'll, I'll do the legwork here and, and get and get, you know, and kind of figure out. That would be great. Yes, Amy?
They, your presentation, they have, you know, checklists, you know, one for parks, one for businesses, one for blah blah. If maybe you could get together with Arlene and, just to go down the checklist because most of these things we're already doing. And, and, and I don't, there might be one or two of this whole list that we might want to think about. But I don't think more than that we really need because I do agree, we're very pet friendly and we have the dog parks and all these other things.
And it's the question, right? Do, do we want the recognition of something we're already doing? Or do we not want that recognition? Or would this kind of make it? What a great thing to get the recognition.
Even if you go down the checklist, we do this, we do this, we do this, and aren't we great? That's fine with me too.
Perfect, okay.
And then issue a.
That sounds great.
Public relation statement.
Absolutely, thank you council. Okay, now we're going to move on to item E. Authorize the mayor to submit letters to the city's United States Congressional delegation, requesting them to assist in retaining and increasing the federal community development block grant. And this is.
I think that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, okay. Excellent. We're moving.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Now what about the tiger grants?
The what?
Afterwards, we did see additional email from the mayors, the conference of mayors, and there did seem to be a concern about the tiger grants as well. But they're keeping, moving on that, so if you'd like us to.
I would suggest we do that too.
Great. And Audrey, you had something?
I just want to pull something out of order because I have one person in the room who's waiting and I just don't want him waiting two or three hours.
That's fine by me.
And that is.
Let's finish this, sorry.
Okay, you want, let's just, all right, so we're good on the block, the letters, right?
We didn't get a, we didn't vote.
Okay, let's vote. There's been a motion to approve, and I'll second it. Further discussion, roll call please.
Councilman Schlaacke.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Wonderful.
And waiting in the tiger grants as well?
Yes. I have the direction, two separate letters, one for tiger grants and one for community development block.
Wonderful, thank you. Audrey?
I have Bill Fennell in the room right now. Bill Fennell, Fennell is with GL Homes. This is item 14A on the city attorney portion of the agenda. It's the direction on issuing road impact fees for phase one of Logan Boulevard. First of all, it's in Councilmember Forbes' district and he's not here right now.
Right.
I don't know if you want to postpone it until he is available.
Was Matt here? Matt would know. Who's Matt?
Here's Matt.
Matt on cue.
I don't know if council wants to postpone it until Councilmember Forbes. This is one where phase one, which would be 30%, we would give staff direction that it's okay, that we will consider paying road impact fee credits or issuing road impact fee credits to get the design, preliminary design and 30% plans completed on Bella Logan. This gets the project going, but there is impact fee credits. The other thing is normally with impact fee credits, we don't issue until everything is done, the whole project, the road's ready to open. In this case, it would be set up in three phases because this is a very large project. So that would be something if council is ready to look at that. Also, these are proposals. The actual money that would be paid would be actually what the city approves consistent with the ordinance, section 2-202 of the land development code, as the road impact fees. It is what it is. They have to provide, you know, all the invoices and proof of payment for each piece that we issue credit for.
Right. Council, what's your pleasure?
I like to hear from Matt.
Okay, great, yeah, absolutely. Matt Feeney, hello.
Good afternoon, Matt Feeney, Public Works Director for the record. This, this action would allow us to move forward with the developer to get basically the, the design changes that would be required for moving the proposed Logan Boulevard from its kind of off-center right-of-way to the middle. There are some challenges there. There's a, not challenges, but just different conditions. The grade is different. They really do need to assess to understand how much fill would need to be brought in and what that would in turn translate to in terms of cost of construction of the roadway. So for, for the realignment of Logan, there is some homework that has to be done, so to speak, that is represented in this line of work. In addition, it's the same type of investigation and work would be necessary to construct a roundabout at the interchange there at Logan Boulevard. So they, they broke their costs out. I do believe they are fair. They, they did receive proposals from firms that are familiar with that type of work. And it would enable us to have an understanding, more than just an understanding. A 30% plan is, it's a bit of a misnomer. It's, it's a little more than 30%. By the time you get to 30%, it is a much smaller jump to, to get to final construction plan. So I think the value that we're getting for the work is fair and will allow the developer to move forward to give us what that final construction cost would be for both of those components, the realigned roadway as well as the possibility of the roundabout there.
Now, I remember from conversations here at council, Mr. Forbes was somewhat involved in trying to move that right away and such.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so there's no reason he wouldn't be for this, just, I mean.
And I was just going to say, anything inconsistent with those meetings that you know of, right? Anything inconsistent with the.
No, actually, we entered into an agreement to get the, the additional right-of-way reservation. And it, it called out these components to, to realign the roadway as well as to consider a roundabout at the intersection. So this just allows us to carry forward in, in concurrence with the agreement that we entered into with Village Walk to get that right-of-way reservation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
I just, I just have a simple question. The reason why we're giving impact fees is because they're doing something in addition to what they normally would do? Is that how it works? And, and these are the, this is the, the, the planning for the modifications that we are asking them to do?
That, that is, that is correct.
And, and what's a little different from this is that this is planning that normally we don't do impact fees for planning. We wait until they do something. Is that correct?
That's more.
So the, the two things that are different is that we had, we went to them and developed this right-of-way plan here with the, with the roundabout, or we talked about doing it. And then.
A little different, but close.
What are the two things that are different here?
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll explain. The, the two things that are different are the roundabout at the intersection and the alignment of the road. The road actually shifted or is proposed to shift several hundred feet so that it's more.
They're going to take the middle out of the middle as opposed to the middle out of one of the sides.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Correct.
And, and that's what these fees are reflective of. Those are things that they would not have had to.
Normally have to do.
Correct.
But we're, we're suggesting that they do it and they agree to do it, so therefore. And then the other thing is that normally would wait for them to do it before we give the impact fees or don't?
Normally we would. The, the one thing I think that Audrey's looking here at me for is there is additional, this allows them to, to give you what they estimate that final construction cost will be. So they were obligated to build a roadway through that corridor. And obviously, we would not be recommending a credit for that base roadway. So, so this allows them to do the additional work in the design side of it. They will be coming back once they have the understanding of what that design will be and what those additional costs will be. And they will be asking for the differential in construction cost. And that will be a larger number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank them for working with us. This is great for them, it's great for us, it's great for the whole community.
Okay, great. There's been a motion in a second, further discussion. Thank you, Matt. Roll call please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Schlaacke.
Great, okay. We are now, and thank you. Is there anything you want to add? I mean, now that, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, appoint city council member as the voting delegate for the city of Benita Springs for the Florida League of Cities Conference scheduled for August 17th through the 19th at the World Center Marriott in Orlando, Florida. And Councilman Schlaacke had indicated to me, how many members are going to be there? And does, you know, obviously with our meeting, our second meeting in August is going to be the 16th. Where are we with that in terms of attendance?
I will be out of town with family issues in California.
Okay, Steve, okay. Thoughts are with you there, buddy. I'll, I'll be at the conference. Mike, you're going to be at the conference?
I'll be there.
And Fred will be there, so we may, we won't have a quorum, right? For August 16th.
How's that?
I'll make a motion that we cancel the meeting for the 16th.
Well, I, I wasn't going to go up till after, because the 16th is the morning meeting, so I wasn't going to leave until after. I was going to be at the meeting and then go up to Orlando. So, I mean, as far as being here, I'm here.
Wait a second, I'm looking at the calendar wrong. Yeah, I'm looking at the numbers wrong, the 17th through the 19th. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry. And Steve, safe travels, Godspeed with you, but, okay. So I think we're okay in the meeting, I'm sorry. I was looking at those numbers the wrong way.
I may not be there, but I'll be there for the workshop, which on the 15th, which we're doing, right? With the zoning board.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so anyway, Mike, you want to be the chairman, the voting?
Well, I say Fred's not here, let's nominate him.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, well, we'll nominate Councilman Fred Forbes. Is there a second to that?
Well, no, it should be the mayor, you're kidding.
Do you want it to be, I'm just trying.
It should be the mayor.
Actually, I'd like to have a little discussion on this because I do think it should be the mayor. But I think we, we need to talk about, maybe at our budget meeting. It's great to go to all these things, but it costs money. And, and one of the, the red light, the, not the red light, the red flagged items in our budget has been the growth in the council budget. So I think we should have representatives go to these meetings. And I think the mayor should, in my view, take precedence because he does represent us. But in this particular case, I think you should do it. But I would like to start a discussion on this.
Okay, I, I agree with that.
Okay, great. There's been a motion in a second for the, I guess, me to be the voting member? Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, further discussion, roll call please.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Schlaacke.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye. Okay, a radish sheet two, right? Approve a resolution, appointing members to the outreach advisory committee. And if you look, if you looked at the green sheet, you're only looking at seven names. But if you look at, and I believe, is there a ballot in front of all members? No, okay, so I just have the one, okay. There's actually, there's been two additional names. Juan Romero and Jesse Purdon. What I would like to suggest.
Are those the two that are just asking to be chairman, correct?
No, they, they're actually, they're.
Additional.
Additional names for consideration. So whereas these, what I'd like to propose, and obviously for discussion, I confirmed with Deb that with these committees, the normal number is seven, right, Arlene? I mean, okay, just want to make, and where we have a total of nine, what I would like to suggest is that we take the seven from Benita Springs. But I am very familiar with the two members, or, you know, that have applied from Estero. And I, I don't know if the term is an alternate member or the term is a, is that, is that?
Normally when we do alternates, we put it inside the resolution as an alternate, maybe.
Can we make, make a motion now to amend that?
I can make.
Because I, I'm very familiar with these two folks. I would, I would not want to discourage them in any way. They will have very valuable input. But in terms of getting down to the brass tacks of seven, yes, Steve?
Mayor, it's not written in stone that you have to have seven members because we have nine at the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Well, you've got the alter, yeah, correct. You would, typically there are seven members as long as it's an uneven number, that is helpful. But there's nothing that prohibits you from having nine full members, that's a decision.
Perfect, so let's, if we can do the nine, that, that would be great.
Change in quorum also, I presume?
I just got a question. I mean, I don't want to discourage anybody, but, I mean, these people live in Estero. The initial conceptual idea, this was for, to get Benita Springs residents more involved with this. Now we're opening up to Estero. I mean, if that's the case, did anyone else in Estero want to be on this committee? Why don't we make them alternates then?
Yeah, can we make them alternates, Audrey? And, and I agree, I don't, do not disagree.
So it'll be seven, seven of those that live in the city, the two others will serve as alternates?
Right. If that's okay. Or whatever the term is, yeah.
Well, that's a question for you. It's a little bit different. An alternate would have voting capability if the two of the folks are absent. If you make him like ex officio, they don't vote, but they provide input.
Ex officio?
I like that.
Thank you, no, thank you for that clarification.
And wherever they live, we're annexing.
Yeah, ex officio. And then do we need a separate motion for the chair or do we do that now? A separate motion for the chair, okay.
And that's your call.
Do we do a motion for the first?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the seven from Benita Springs as permanent members and the two from Estero as ex officio members. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, further discussion, roll call please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
And now as chairman, I'd like to nominate Jesse Purdon to be the chairman of this committee, and I guess separately, I'll nominate myself for the liaison, right? From council. So I'd like to make a motion that Jesse Purdon chair this new committee.
Second.
In a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye. Right, and it will be up to this committee to, they'll nominate a vice chair, right? Yeah. Okay, wonderful. And then if anybody doesn't object, I'll nominate myself to serve as the liaison for this committee and council? Okay?
And I'll bring a resolution back amending the-
We don't have to vote.
So it's very clear.
Okay, fantastic. Wonderful. And we don't need a vote on that, right?
No.
Okay, great.
So I know we got other stuff, but can I go back to one more council member item?
Yes, absolutely.
Actually, two quickly, one's not on here, which is, I do think we need a little better agenda management, all of us somehow, because we spent, and I'm not saying they weren't worthwhile hearing, but from Florida Power and Light, and I'm very much in favor of the protecting the eagles, but we probably had about an hour and a quarter of that. And then when we get to the substance, we're basically cutting out community development, and we have people looking at their watches when we're talking about, you know, mayor and council member items that are frankly much more important. So I don't know, you know, I don't have any specific suggestions, and I know we've talked about this before, but somehow, we need better management of the agenda, because-
Too much.
The presentation should not be, we should have business meetings where we just do things where we really have to vote, and the presentation should be totally separate.
And maybe things like Florida Power and Light can somehow be communicated to council, I don't know, and then have shorter discussions or something.
Okay. Audrey?
From a former government I was with, that's where, when you would have the subcommittee, and again, everybody would be invited, that's where you would hold the presentations.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
So that's where you get the additional data.
I think it's a great point, Peter.
But it's, yeah. The other thing is, I want to come back to that so-called sign bill, which isn't a sign bill, which is a major deal. So Arlene and I and Matt were down, I want to talk about, I'll talk about this later, with, meeting with city manager of Naples yesterday, and Greg, I forget Greg's last name, who works with him, basically has Matt's job at Street and Stormwater, basically talking about bike walk stuff, what they're doing, what we're doing, and comparing notes. And it was a very, very good meeting, I thought. Arlene, yeah. And Matt, right? Yeah, so a lot of good ideas shared. But this is Bill Moss, in the middle of that, talked about this House Bill, 1021, Senate Bill 1312, which was already approved by the governor. And, you know, Bill's view is, this is a major deal for them, because they've got design review, like Astero has design review, we don't have design review, but we have standards. And this on its face allows any franchise to disregard our standards, because of the way it's phrased. In other words, we can't impose any aesthetic requirement that conflicts with any trade dress, color pattern, design scheme, or any other image standard, or other features of corporate branding identity. Which basically means total, it means substantive preemption of the locale.
Golden archers are going anywhere they want to go.
Who is?
The golden archers are going anywhere.
Yeah, and it also has implications for, I mean, in terms of equity for small businesses, right? They're bound by, and what we have, and these guys are not. And as Bill very well put in a memo he's drafting, which is, you know, local governments are uniquely qualified to understand what their citizens want for their community. Communities define themselves through their local codes and other policy decisions that have a thorough vetting within each community. Florida would be better served by limiting what it preempts from local government. And I talked to people in Astero last night, and they're already today at their meeting, talking about this as well. They've been talking about it, because they got a heads up about this for three weeks' time. So I'd like to suggest that we have a letter sent by the mayor to our local delegation expressing our concern with this. And I'd also like to suggest that if possible, we get together with Astero and Naples, assuming they're willing, to just express our voice as well collectively on this. This is quintessential home rule. So that's my thought.
Okay, great.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
With a little caveat on it, in August, when you go up to the Florida League of Cities, talk to, you're on the mayor's council.
Right.
See how they all feel about it.
Right, right.
I just have one addition, because I'm troubled, because I saw this bill going through, and I thought it was defeated, so I think this sign thing was included in another, it was sort of, it wasn't just on a sign, just on signs. So I was kind of surprised to hear that had been included in some other thing, so, you know, this is the way they packaged it, and it wasn't monitored appropriately, in my view.
So signs evidently, I'm telling you what I learned in half an hour, so maybe, you know, the signs were the gas station signs. And it's interesting, you know, Bill actually reached out, I'm not going to name names, but to one of our legislators and said, no, this is more than gas station, no, and he was told back, no, it's gas station signs, and then, no, the actual wording has nothing to do with-
Right.
Yeah, so last night, the people in Astero talked to Bert Saunders, and he said, no, no, it's more than gas station signs. It's this other stuff as well.
Mike?
I agree that we should have local control over some aspects of it, but when I look at a logo, I think the state's right, you know, in protecting that company's logo. You know, we shouldn't say, you know, that Starbucks, you can't use green, you need to use gray, or whatever. You know, it's their branding, and just like we want to have a good brand for our city, all these companies, or not even just companies, but even smaller businesses, you spend time on your logo, you want people to recognize that logo, that's what drives them to you. So on a sign, we're not allowed to dictate what, the wording, right, Audrey? On a sign, we can't, we have no control over wording.
No, that's content.
Yeah, over the content. So I feel like the logo should be grouped in with the content of the sign. But I think we should have say over the sign in general, whether it be a pole sign, monument sign, size, you know, color of the background of the sign. But when it comes to the logo, I agree with the state, it should be part of the content. So I kind of, I see both sides of it, so.
But we do have a sign ordinance, and does it restrict logos, or?
Actually, I was pulling it up right now, as you were speaking. It does address logos, so that there is, but I believe logos are allowed.
There's a long conversation about this, a year ago.
Logos are allowed to be whatever the logo-
We have restrictions on colors.
Right.
So in terms of the logo design, no. The colors, to a certain extent, yes.
Right. It's a little lighter, or something like that, right? It's a little less-
Correct. It's a primary color.
Colors and-
Yes, sir.
We had, we had an issue with one entity, because they wanted one color of red, and we said, you needed to go off just, like, not a degree, like a fraction of a degree, to like a brick red, or maroon red.
Right, but that was a long, a long, months-long discussion at the previous city council. This is not, this is something recent.
Yes, sir.
While your talking was adopted.
And I think that if council would like, we could bring this up at the next meeting, kind of walk through what this legislation says. I mean, your call.
Oh, oh, well, we want to get it right. I mean, so, but my suggestion is, whatever the letter is, be correct.
Yeah, exactly.
But-
Because I agree with you. This is, this could potentially be a very big deal. I don't know how much of this will stand when the dust settles, but right now, we have what we have.
Right. And the more pressure we put on, the dust might settle the right way.
Correct.
Counsel, anything further? There's been a motion in a second?
I think it's really, it's really critical for what we're trying to do. And if you go to other communities, like Boulder, Colorado, or some of these, you know, sort of more controlled, you see that it really makes a difference. Even if you have the logo, you don't have to have it like chartreuse, you know, you can have something that sort of blends in. So I think it's important.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mike?
I agree with the home rule aspect on the sign, but when it comes to the logos, I don't think we should be messing with colors.
Let me get back with you as to what our sign code actually has as to, because I think we probably are fine with the state law and our language. But let me get back with you on that, if that's okay, if I can write a memo to council.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
No.
Okay, now let's see. Read, draft, signature. We've done the evaluations. Form of-
Just reading the ordinance, I believe.
First reading of the following ordinances, and there's actually no public comment on this. Audrey?
Actually, so there's no public comment, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
Page three.
This is, this is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs establishing a process in authorizing issuance of trespass warnings, creating an appeal process for when a person is trespassed on city property, providing for enforcement, providing for conflicts of law, providing for severability, providing for inclusion and code, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance, if council goes forward, will be scheduled for a second reading and public hearing on August 2nd, 2017, in these chambers, beginning at 5:30 PM, or sometime thereafter. You have a copy of the ordinance. It did have some minor changes that was provided by the city of Benita Springs Hearing Examiner, some modifications, as well as what I received from the sheriff's office. This is just to be compliant with federal case law as to when trespassing people on government property, it's a little different than when it's a private trespass.
So moved-
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Discussions.
Now, and they have to be offered appeal too, right?
Absolutely. It has to be a meaningful appeal.
Meaningful appeal.
So it can't be something hidden in a code, it needs to be on the citation, it needs to be very thorough. Because again, people have a tax, people, sometimes the trespassers are taxpayers, they might buy something as a consumer if they're homeless, and they deserve a right to public property, so we need to be very careful about that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, setting forth the fee schedule for public sports, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codifications, scrivener errors, inclusion code, and effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading will be held on August 2nd, 2017, beginning at 5:00 PM in these chambers, or sometime thereafter, or 5:30. I just want to point out to you that we did add what we call the paver language, as well as the reinspection fee. Those were changes that, I'm sorry, the paver, those are new to the list that weren't charged necessarily before, so just wanted to make you aware that those were added.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Okay.
Second reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, extending Benita Springs ordinance number 17-01, the temporary moratorium on cannabis dispensing businesses, providing for geographic area cover, providing for penalties, conflicts of law, providing for severability, scrivener errors, providing for an effective date. This is a first, sorry, this is the second reading of the ordinance. Public comment will be taken at this time. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is on file with the city clerk, and it is legally sufficient. At this time, we've gone over this multitude of times. I think you're tired of me talking about it, so I will see nods on that. I'll let you go.
Okay, great. Public comment? Members of the public that'd like to speak on this shit, this issue only, and then right after this, we're going to have public, sorry. And on this particular issue, from the public. Okay, seeing none? Counsel?
I'm going to go for it, but I have a question or two, and in the interest of time, we can pick it up later, but there was an article in Naples paper about two weeks ago, it was very interesting. I'm not sure how accurate it was, but if it was, it was extremely interesting. Because it was talking about how the state had different sections, and in those sections, there was a limit on the number of facilities you could have.
Yes.
And my question, when I read it, was, well, how does that dovetail with the notion that any place you have a pharmacy, you could have this?
Okay, so what the state does is, it certifies, the Department of Health certifies and licenses the different facilities. Now, in order to be a facility, it's by what they call vertical alignment. So you have to be in relationship with the processor, cultivator, transporter. You can't have those as separate items. And each one is entitled, based on the number of people who have a registry card, until it gets to 100, they're allowed 25 throughout the state of Florida, and I believe there's a further restriction. For example, we're in the southwest territory. They're allowed to service statewide, but in the southwest territory, they can only put so many in the southeast, the central north, as west. And then there's a trigger where they get additional as the registry increases.
All right, so the article was saying that there's a, the way I read it, there's an absolute limit in a certain area. That doesn't appear to be the case from what you're saying. We don't get into details, but that doesn't appear to be the case, from what you're saying.
There is a limit, but it's, I wouldn't call it absolute. It's in Section 8 of the new 381986, and I can share it with you.
All right.
But there's additional licenses that the state anticipates issuing, and then they would each have another 25. And then there's the trigger, once you get a certain amount of patients on the registry, you would then add additional.
All right, we can talk, I don't want to hold the whole thing up, but it sounds like there's not an absolute limit, then.
No, but I think we should, because I had the same-
Oh, you read the same one?
Are you, are our brains connected?
Channeling.
Because it's exactly, it's exactly what I was thinking, because-
Oh, John's got-
I inferred from that, that we might have like two or three within the Naples, or Lee County or Collier County.
Fort Myers.
You know, so, so what, so does that mean that it's sort of like on a first come, first basis? So if you get a permission to put one of these retail centers, and you've already exhausted your allotment of four, then nobody else can come forward and say, I want to put one in your, is that true?
Well, first, I don't see where that would be true. Right now, the way I read Section 8, you have the people who were previously received their license, but haven't been allowed to go yet until the rules are all finalized. And they will be able to start August 1, 2017. Then you have the people, October 3, 2017, and that's the recognized class member, known as the black farmers and agriculturalist. Then you have two additional licenses for those in the fruit and citrus. You have the six months after registration of 100,000 active qualified. They each can have four, and that might be the four additional, the four additional language there. And they, statewide, they have a limitation of how many, and then on the 100,000, and then they can increase it.
But, but my question is, can, if we didn't do anything, we allowed it, let's say we didn't have this moratorium, we allowed them to come into our pharmacy zoning regulations, could we have one in every pharmacy?
No.
Because we're limited by quantity, right?
There's two separate standards that run parallel to each other, but really don't work together.
All right.
One, and I think you referenced both of them in your original question. One is the locational standards. And so if you either work under the state's separation requirements and locational standards, or you outright ban. That's one question. And the second question is the overall number that is allowed per region. And that number, Audrey just provided a brief outline of that. So you have a distinction in permitted locations,
Right.
and you also have a maximum permitted number
You do.
of facilities. That's what she had just outlined, that last section.
Statewide a maximum number. As an individual jurisdiction, it's not a statewide, but there are locational standard requirements. But the locational requirements tend to be, I believe there's 500 feet from like a school facility. I think that's the only one I remember reading in it, but, you know, it's a long statute, so it might be, I didn't catch one.
So what you referenced essentially is those two separate requirements. One capping the number of facilities, the other one providing locational standards where those facilities can go.
All right, we can find it, sorry.
Well, I have a concern about this, because if there is this quantitative restriction, and we are like the last to get our ordinance in place, does that mean that there will not be any retail, you know, they could exhaust the quantities, and we won't be able to have one in Benita Springs? Maybe that's what we want to do, but I don't think that's what we want to do. So I have some concern about this continual moratorium and taking too much time in deciding where we want them.
Well, the first thing that you remember is that there is not a restriction on you filling a prescription. And what we're talking about is the distribution facility. So somebody in Benita Springs, regardless of whether a facility exists here or not, you are still able to fill your prescription. The second, directly answer your question, yes. If the maximum number of locations is met in the southwest region prior to us having regulations in place, there would not be additional facilities unless the number of prescription holders increased.
Well, then I think we should, I think we should go forward with this, because we can stop a moratorium anytime we want, but I think we should expedite and clarify whether we would be foreclosed in having one of these retail establishments in Benita Springs, because one of these other communities decide, well, we're going to just do it, and everybody would apply. I have, I think that could be, that's possible, because you see these really small towns opening their arms, so to speak, to the distribution system, the retail things, and then if it's, if they are going to follow these quantitative bases, I personally think we should have at least one in Benita Springs, and maybe two, according to our-
We have about three vendors that are interested in siding at this location.
Well.
Your concerns are valid.
No, but even so, when I read those numbers for the, I was looking at Collier and Lee County, it wasn't like 100.
Right.
It was a limited number. So first of all, I like to know what that number is, and when we look at Lee and Collier County, and see where we would be if we don't have something in place relatively soon.
Well, if I understand it correctly, it's not just Lee and Collier County, it's the southwest region.
That's right.
It was wider.
Whatever that region is, we need to explore it and find out which towns or cities would be included in that, and once they start the count, where will we be, you know?
And I want to point out, there is one already planned for South Fort Myers, there's one planned for North Fort Myers. If you go over to the Department of Health, you can look at the registry list, and if you go to the individual websites of the companies, you'll see, it'll usually say like coming soon, and they have the actual physical address. So I tend to think that that's pretty definite, if they're actually listing the address out. So there are some places in Lee County. The problem we have is our definition of drugstore, which includes pharmacy. We don't have a set-alone pharmacy. So we allow pharmacy, and I'll give an example. My son had to be on a medicine, an IV, and it was shipped from Billy's Creek. It's an industrial site. We have those in industrial sites. We have pharmacies allowed in residential, planned developments, and also, of course, commercial. So we need to either tighten our regulations on pharmacy, and that might be the way to go, because everyone always thinks a pharmacy is CVS or Walgreens, but it's not. It's more inclusive than that. So we need to either clean that up. I need to give you the calculations, and you're correct for asking for it. Glad I brought the ordinance with me today. Because there are calculations of what could happen now, and then in the future, if you just allow it, because nothing says you have to change your regulations. You could just allow it, and then see how the market addresses it. Once that occurs, you could feel that it's already adequate as to what's there. Once that occurs, you could feel that it's already adequate as to what's there. I mean, you have, you have several options, or we can amend the ordinances, but the problem about amending the ordinance is then if we're affecting drugstores, or we're affecting retail shops, Publixes, because I fill up my prescription at Publix. You know, very, yeah, very common, you know, I do it while shopping. So, you know, we gotta be careful how we do some restrictions, so we don't end up being in a situation where we shoot ourselves with not having availability to medicine. So, big issues there.
I had one other unrelated point, real quick, no need to address it here, but just on my mind, I'm focusing more on the fact that hadn't totally come into my mind, that it appears this is available through the mail. So, not through.
Not mail.
Courier.
Yeah.
Through FedEx, whatever. Oh, no, it's a courier.
Courier, yeah, and it's a manifest. It's a full.
All right, all right, so, all right, well, maybe something to think about, then, if it's not easy. But i- if it is straightforward, why is that much different than what half the world buys through the mail, by courier, by FedEx? So no need to say anything, I just, just what's on my mind.
It's a whole nother section of the statute.
Right, no, I mean, in terms of the practicality of it.
Right, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to go.
No, thank, thank you, Amy, and, okay. And we still have a quorum, so we're good. Okay, and you're good, Pete? Okay. There is actually one thing, not to, and I'm glad I actually looked at it while we still have counsel here.
Most of it.
We, right, most of the counsel here. We will have to, prior to the end of September, schedule that workshop with Mayor Bloomberg's team.
Oh, okay.
So, let's look at that quick.
Do we vote?
And I'm glad I looked at that.
Yeah, we voted on that.
I'm glad.
Did they?
We voted on it.
All right.
During the discussion, you were, he brought it up.
Did we not vote, Deb, where we needed to vote?
We, we voted, yeah.
Are we, we're okay?
Set a date.
Okay, I thought I.
Oh, yeah, I'm moving on to something else now, I'm sorry. Now, prior to the end of Sept, Greg, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I.
You said Bloomberg's thing is at the end of September now.
We need to do it prior to the end of September, is what I'm getting at. Sorry about that. What abo, I mean, let's see. What about the twentieth, and the only reason I say the twentieth is September, is that will be a morning meeting for us? Does that work better?
It's a religious holiday, starting sundown.
Oh, on the twentieth? Oh, okay.
I mean, it's fine, till sundown.
Yeah, well, no. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Wait a minute, do we have a city council meeting that day?
Yeah.
Oh, so, all right.
Okay.
We're having a meeting, right? We're having a city council.
A morning meeting?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So go with what you're saying.
The twentieth, and I guess that would be.
One o'clock, or?
I was just gonna say, yeah. Okay, right, and I'll, and I'll, okay, on the twentieth.
I won't be here with, because I won't be at either of the meetings in September.
Okay, so September twentieth. Wonderful, and I'll get that set up. And C.C. Arlene. Okay, wonderful, thank you, counsel.
I need a vote still on the moratorium.
That's okay, that's.
That's what I was saying.
Oh, you're talking about the.
Call the comment.
Yeah, some public comment, too.
Public comment, please.
I thought you were talking about the Bloomberg.
No. From what I understand, they have to have a number of people that are qualified to purchase this. Where does that number come from, and when does that number come from? That's one question. Otherwise, is the, do this retail distribution center, does that have to be exclusively to marijuana, medical marijuana, or could it be in a, in a sports store, or some other store? Does it have to be a set aside retail outlet for this one item? Is that, that's my question. Do I get an answer? I guess not.
Oh, I can give an answer, I didn't know.
Well, not, I mean, after the meeting, Rick, we're just trying, yeah, but she'll absolutely get you an answer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, other members of the public at this time? Yes, sir?
On this item.
On marijuana.
We're getting late.
I'm confused, I'm confused. I'm sorry, still on this item.
I just need you to vote on the marijuana moratorium.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Sack.
Okay, great. Audrey, anything else?
Not on marijuana, I do have items on my agenda. We covered one, but I just wanna go.
But, yeah, but now we're gonna move on to public comment. Okay, public comment at this time, members of the public that would like to, thank you for your patience.
Getting good exercise, sitting here.
Yes.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Simmons.
Hello there.
Council members, support staff, and of course, those on TV. You gotta recognize them. You guys know I'm Jim Weeks, Weeks Fish Camp, and I'm here because of the meeting on six-twenty-one, we had a green sheet out with a review and discussion of Weeks Fish Camp property and history vision. I went down to the camp recently, and I thought what I saw was new survey markers or boundary markers. But that's a red flag to me, like the property's got some movement going on. I wanna stay in front of that if we can. The city of Benita Springs and its residents won't get a second chance. There is no other property like this left in southwest Florida with as much direct access to Estero Bay in the Gulf of Mexico. We all know that. I hope any of the new developers share the same vision that was promised to city and its residents back in 2014. Phase one, which included a hundred-and-twenty-five boat trailer parking, et cetera. Coconut Village was known as phase one. I feel there is multiple marina resort developers interested in completing phase one for us. So I hope the residential guys have gone by. I don't know if they have or not. The project was promised as Marina Resort District. Any residential development on the property will not assure current and future residents that they will have adequate access to the Gulf of Mexico. A marina resort just usage for the property, for all the property is what we need for that. I see the logos out there, and I've brought up one end, I go garage sale shopping, I found it 'cause I collect all these things. And on it, it says, Benita City, Benita Springs, Florida, gateway to the Gulf. We can't forget that was our logo for a long time. Over seventy years, I felt that the Weeks Fish Camp gave us a gateway to the Gulf. Now it's in the city annexation for most of it, and I'd like for that to maintain as much as possible. And to do this, I think we do not need to change a comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, or zoning, keep it as it is. Don't touch it. I brought flyers to give you guys my plan on this. Audrey, or somebody. I'm getting a little nervous, I gotta slow down.
No, you're good, buddy.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
You guys can read these in the future, or right now, I don't expect you to take time to overlook them now, because it is kinda late.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will not get a second chance. So please, make, I know you've supported us all along, but support the residents and everything else to have this gateway to the Gulf, and it being in the northernmost of the city of Benita Springs now, I feel it can also be a gateway to the city of Benita Springs as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for your patience, and thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Thank you for your patience. Good afternoon.
John West. I was sitting at the back when I heard that I was supposed to have been mistaken about something, and I spoke to Audrey in the break, and we've established that I was not mistaken, and we've resolved that problem. I also want to comment about two other things. One is the fact that this property, Bamboo Property, has been in the hands of the city for fifteen years, and it occurred to me that the city has quite a lot of other properties that could be sold. And I wonder if there's an inventory of such properties made by the city, so they have an idea of the value of those properties as they were bought, and the estimated value of them as they might fetch in the market today, because it's money. The other thing is, Peter, your question about the agenda. You know, when the agenda is published, we look at the internet, and we come here expecting the agenda to be more or less followed. And this hasn't been the case today. And I'm just wondering, you know, public comment is what you're looking for, and you'd like to see the room filled with people, if possible, so that you know that people are interested in what's going on in the city. So it's a bit of a disservice to the public not to know that something is being discussed when it's supposed to be discussed. And I'm just wondering whether, when the agenda is prepared, if some kind of time limit could be put on the time when things are supposed to be discussed, and how long those discussions are supposed to last, so that one knows before coming to a meeting how long the meeting is likely to, to last, and when each item is supposed to be discussed, that people can come in and go out when they know that something is about to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Hello, Rick?
Yes, Rick Steinmeier again. You, you seem like you want more money to spend. I don't know why you wanna punish the people of Benita Springs by taking more money out of their pockets. Rather, you should just cut back on your spending. I mean, we don't need, we have seventeen years of spending other people's money. We must've been getting something done by now. We have a three-million-dollar loan that we made, that's not paying any interest now, isn't that good? We have a five-acre bamboo court that hasn't paid any taxes in fifteen years. That's real, really good shape there. Let's tighten up and stop taking it from the people. Maybe the people don't care, I don't know. Maybe they wanna give all their money to the city. I think we're making progress. We should've, I don't know what, we need a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar lighthouse to show that we're the city of Benita Springs when we're the eighth fastest-growing city in the country. I don't see where we need to advertise much more, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Seeing none, I guess we'll, we'll move along. City attorneys report.
Thank you. We did talk about one item, but I do wanna have one item that's not on the, language right now, give me a moment. And that is, I've heard back from Tom Cloud as to doing his, and he's the attorney, Tom Cloud is the one for Benita Springs Utilities. I sent counsel an email yesterday explaining the process of selection. The firm he works for is Gray Robinson, which is a big firm, and as a result, there is some question as to conflicts. I believe they're all wavable, but that would be something I would want counsel's permission.
What's the subject matter?
I'm sorry, counsel on June twenty-first asked me to obtain outside counsel to look at what are the city's rights and responsibilities under Florida law and the franchise as it relates to Benita Springs Utilities. Tom mentioned that they did check, and there were three cases, I think four. Just wanted to point out, one of the cases was Melanie Zimmerman Living Trust, and that was an eminent domain case on Shangri-La. I believe it's all closed out. Another case was JPMC Legal TX, which is who they represented, that corporation, and that was in regard to property on Sunray that was subject to a code enforcement with a fire. And then, they also represented in a zoning challenge, and you may remember Derek Rooney from Gray Robinson was here, Richard and Lydia Schroeder, and that was also a closed case. The one that Stan Stoudt, owns the property on Oakland CPD, Oakland Park.
I think as a courtesy, you should, my personal view, I have no issue, but as a courtesy, you should talk to BSU. Make sure they're okay.
Okay, with the hiring?
That's my, yeah.
Okay. I can forward it before I sign the letter of engagement, and I'll call John, should I call John, or?
Whatever you wanna do, I don't, it's up to you.
I'll call their attorney, Don Thompson.
Yeah, I just think as a courtesy.
Sure.
Okay, great. Audrey, anything else, or?
No, sir.
Okay. Great, okay. Counsel, anything else for Audrey?
Nope.
Okay, city managers report.
Thank you. We completed the discussion of legislative priorities, so I'll move on to B, which is we are asking authorization to send a letter from the city manager to the Lee County Department of Human Services, who helps us with our community development block grant in relation to our obligation of our inter-local agreement. We are to provide them with direction on the, on what we'll be using the fiscal year funds of 2017, 2018 for. We have had correspondence with our contract manager, and as you see, we are able to identify that we would use it under the category of infrastructure specifically for bicycle and pedestrian path within the HUD low-to-moderate-income area within the city limits. We, this would allow staff the opportunity to continue to work with the selected firm, Alta, on the priority paths and/or that we talked about, leading connection from Terry Street to 041, or as well as looking at Terry Street if that elevates into our project that we move more quickly.
Great.
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion, I'll second that. Motion in a second, further discussion?
No, just to thank Arlene for all her hard work on that.
Absolutely.
And I just had a question, why do we pay the fifteen percent administration fee?
From our population, the funds are sent to the county, and then they do all of the administrative work and the studies involved with allocating the HUD program. At some point in time, when our population is, I believe, over the fifty thousand, the city council can have a discussion as to whether we'd like to administer ourselves, but there's quite a bit of work involved with that, and there are full-time employees set to do that, with that process. So it'd be an evaluation on work and level of that.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if we get, you know, fifty-two-thousand dollars worth of benefit out of them doing it versus something that we would do, but, okay.
Do you, do you think they, we do, Arlene?
Yes, there's quite a bit of reporting and work involved with the allocation of these funds. It's, it's, it's a very tedious job, but it's something to discuss when we're eligible for that opportunity, which, which we could very well be here in the near future. But we did sign an inter-local agreement with them for, I believe, was it Audrey, five years, is that correct? Five-year period, so.
Okay, great. Counsel? Okay, motion in a second, further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilman Sack.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye. Okay, Arlene, anything else? Great, thank you very much. Okay, mayor and counsel reports. Anybody wanna jump in here? Mike?
I'm good.
You're good? Peter?
Just a few things, next Tuesday, there's a memorial service for Don Brown, who passed away, Estero City Councilman. If anybody's interested, I can send them the information. I'm gonna go up, it's three o'clock.
Please send it, Pete.
Okay, well, why don't I just send it around?
Okay, yeah, send it around, that's even better.
Second, there was a comment from the public about values downtown, and that is part of the white paper that city council had requested from staff. And John and Arlene gave me a ring the other day, asked me to come down and talk about that a little more. We had a good meeting for about an hour on that, half an hour on that, just fleshing out various aspects of that white paper. Last thing is, I mentioned briefly before, but I'm on the Blue Zone So-Called Steering Committee, which meets once a month down at Mochley Road, Naples Hospital, and Bill